Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by. You'll be joined in shortly.
Dr. Pride Supervisor Jones, are you all on the call?
Yes, I'm on the call.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Y'all are coming in loud and clear. Everybody's coming in from the conference room. We'll be ready in just a second.
Thank you.
I'd like to call a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to press their counter order.
Mr. Chair, I wish to recognize that Supervisors Harrison Jones and Adessa Pride, Doctor of Education, are participating this morning via remote telephone access as required by the Board of Supervisors' electronic meeting policy and Section 2.2-3708.2 of the Code of Virginia. Supervisors Jones and Pride have each provided notice that they will have to be physically absent from this morning's meeting. Supervisor Jones has a conflict with his academic schedule and will be participating from the campus of Liberty University in Lynchburg. Dr. Pride has a long planned medical appointment and will be participating from her vehicle in Richmond. Each request is in conformance with the Board's electronic meeting policy and the requirements of the Code of Virginia. Pending an objection from a member of the Board, remote participation by Supervisor Jones and Supervisor Pride shall be approved and noted in the minutes of this meeting. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, is the Hip Park Master Agreement. At the December 202024 IDA meeting, the Industrial Development Authority approved a purchase and sale agreement and a master agreement to enter into a contract with a prospect to sell the Heartland Innovative Technology Park and develop it into a data center campus. The master agreement, which includes the county, now needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisors to forward with the project. We have a suggested motion in the packet. Our county attorney has been working diligently on this. The master agreement sets out responsibilities of the county in the development of the site. I think the highlight probably is the fact that the county will be required to go after grant funds to construct infrastructure to serve the site, including but not limited to water and the water tank, sewer access in connection to the town of Farmville, road improvements to preserve in Tree Fork Road. Estimated cost probably in the neighborhood of $25 million. The county continues to go after grant funds, but the company has agreed to, I'll say, backstop that funding if we're unsuccessful, or to the extent that we're unsuccessful in the grant funding. But it would commit the Board to an incentive program to reimburse up to 50% of the required infrastructure improvements over a 10-year period. Does that, Terry, pretty much summarize our main commitment with the project? And obviously, the purchase and sale agreement, which the Board does not party to, spells out, you know, the purchase price and the timing, the options, the timing. There's a lot of work to be done, particularly from the standpoint of coordination with Dominion Energy to get the needed energy to the site to develop it. And that'll really be the trigger, I think, when and if the company pulls this trigger and starts construction of the site. With that, I'm sure Terry would be happy to answer any questions, or try to, any questions that you might have.
I believe that the Board of Supervisors endorse and support the upcoming sale by the Industrial Development Authority of Prince Edward County, Virginia, of the property referred to as the Hip Park to AVAIO Digital Partners, II LLC, and approved a master agreement which includes both the Industrial Development Authority of Prince Edward County, Virginia, as well as the County of Prince Edward, and authorized the Chairman of the Board to execute the master agreement and direct the county attorney to work with the attorneys representing AVAIO Digital Partners, II LLC, to put the master agreement in its final form.
Do you second me a little bit, sir?
Okay, I move forward. We've got a motion from Ms. Cooper Jones, a second of Mr. Gillum. Just need a roll call vote, Mr. Chair. Don't forget our two on the phone line.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Coogal, Joan?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
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 And I say yes.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the Board. This has been a long process. Also, I want to thank the other members of our team, and of course, Joe Hines sitting out in the audience. And of course, Joe's been there since before day one, when the county embarked on this. But we couldn't have gotten there without Joe, without Brett Weiss and the members of the IDA, all the efforts that they put into to get us there. So, thank you all very much. I would say that the county and AVAIO Digital Partners will be issuing a joint press release later, and I would just ask that we hold comment until that press release gets out, if you can. Next item, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to pass a few copies down. My apologies, Dr. Pride and Vice Chair Jones, I don't have one here for you, but it's just, and I'll read it. "The county's comp plan update is nearing completion. Early in the process, we had a variety of public engagement events conducted to gather community input, including an online survey, two community workshops, and six focus groups. And using that input, all the chapters of the draft comp plan have been drafted, with the land use chapter currently in its final stages to review prior to public review. Once chapters are finalized by the county's Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, open house will be held, which will be advertised once confirmed. This event will be an opportunity for the public to review and comment on the draft plan. All comments collected during the open house will be shared with the county's Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission during a final joint work session. I certainly hope that some of y'all will be able to attend as well. Following the incorporation of being desired edits from the open house and joint work session, the draft comp plan will proceed to the final stage of the update process. The draft plan will be presented during a public hearing before the Planning Commission, who then make a recommendation to the Board. The Board will hold a second public hearing before making a final decision on whether to approve or revise the plan." I would, and I've got one of the two sheets there on the back sheet. Shaun, if you could, go to page 172 and 173 up on the screen. I know it's probably a little hard. We've got two pages of comments on solar, nuclear, and battery electric storage. The last work session we had on the land use chapter, and I'll read through these. There were some, I'll say, questions about, are we heading in the right direction on solar? We kind of tabled action, and the consultant has gone back and put in a number of additional, I'll say stipulations regarding solar and best and nuclear. That was an additional one. My question today is, does the Board feel we need another joint work session with the Planning Commission to discuss further, or do you want us to proceed on to a community meeting to get feedback? Because we're going to have to come back anyway with Plan Commission. So, but some of the stuff they've added regarding solar facilities should be located within one mile of existing transmission line corridors. That puts a pretty narrow scope. Should be sighted at least one mile away from the Sandy River Reservoir and the Apomex River is preferred. Stay away from or completely screened from view of major corridors and scenic byways. Sighting facilities away from or completely screened from natural, cultural, and historic resources is preferred. Siting facilities on brownfield sites is preferred. Siting facilities away from dense residential areas is preferred. Scenic view sheds and visitors are important recreational and economic resources for the county. Let's see. Facilities should be located a distance of one mile from the town or county boundary. Facilities should avoid development of areas of Class IV or V for agricultural suitability as determined by Virginia Department of Conservation, Recreation, Agricultural Models, and/or areas actively farmed within two years preceding application unless portions of the parcels utilized for the facility would continue to be farmed. Facilities should avoid development in areas with forest conservation values or ecological cores rated high to outstanding as determined by TCR. A minimum distance of two miles should be provided between utility scale facilities of the same type. Wildlife corridors should be incorporated into the design of facilities. Solar panels should be required to be sighted on contiguous parcels, limit fragmentation. Facilities, including fencing and support equipment, should be significantly screened from the ground level view of adjacent properties and rights away with a buffer at least 150 feet wide that shall consist of natural vegetation and landforms and/or landscape with plant material consisting of an evergreen deciduous mix at least six feet in height in time of planting. Facilities should provide maximum economic benefit to the county as demonstrated through an economic analysis. Let's see. Facilities should ensure adequate plant water access for cooling purposes. That's really for the nuclear. Facilities should provide adequate education to local emergency services as best management practices. So, I think, I'll say, the language is enhanced from where we started. That really will limit the areas of the county. We've got three main transmission corridors that run north-south and a couple on the top east-west, but it's going to limit, because of that one-mile courage, one-mile ring, you're going to limit where those sites will be located.
You said we got to come back to meet with the Planning Commission again anyway, right?
You do.
Sort of make more operation and go ahead with the public. Let's get feedback from the public first before we meet with the Planning Commission.
You all okay with that? Lou, Ken? All right. Well, we'll get with the consultant, and we'll set up some dates. I'll make sure that the Board and make sure the Planning Commission is aware. We'll make sure everybody's invited, so if you have an opportunity, y'all can slide into those meetings. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, the next item is a presentation of our FY24 audit. Josh Roller, our lead CPA from Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox, is here this morning to present on the audit.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stanley, members of the Board. I'm here today, like Mr. Stanley just said, to present the FY24 audit report. And you should have it in front of you there. I'm just going to point your attention to a couple of different pages in there, and then happy to answer any questions, go into any further detail that you guys need. We'll start on page eight. Page eight is our independent auditor's report. This is where we have issued an unmodified opinion for the county this year. An unmodified opinion is a clean opinion for the, you know, it's the best opinion we can give you all. Few things there. On the next page, page nine, it talks a little bit about responsibilities of management. Management's responsible for the design implementation of internal controls, or financial reporting, and also responsible for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements. A little bit further down that page talks about the auditor responsibilities. We're responsible for developing an audit plan to test those internal controls, test account balances, to kind of get to the ending result of forming an opinion on the financials. From there, we can flip forward a little bit. Page 29 will be the next page I'll point your attention to. This is Exhibit Three. This is your balance sheet for your governmental funds, most notably the general fund there in the first column. You can see total fund balance there towards the end. One change that we're going to make between this version and the final version, this is still considered a draft, will be there's unspent loan proceeds of $4.9 million held at the end of the year, and that should be restricted fund balance. Right now, it's in that unassigned fund balance number, so that $28 million unassigned will go down by 4.9.
That's your radio system funding we use for.
Yep. So, in total, the total fund balance stays the same, but it's just, you know, that unspent, that is for a very specific purpose, so that's one change there. Flipping forward a page to page 31, this is similar to that, you know, this is your governmental fund, statement of revenues, expenditures, change fund balance for the year, most notably, again, the general fund there getting to your ending fund balance that was reported on the balance sheet two pages ago. Let's see. The next, the note, you know, there's a lot of notes, probably. The next, the note, you know, there's a lot of notes, probably close to 100 pages of notes, but I'll point your attention to one. Note seven on page 66, this just gives a breakdown summary of the total debt, long-term obligations at the end of the year for the county, and then as well as the school board and the proprietary funds as well. Page 102 is also another note that I'll point your attention to. This is the breakdown of the Special Projects Fund and how that committed fund balance is broken up between all these different projects there. And that 4.4 million, that ties back to your governmental fund's balance sheet. Page 105, Exhibit 10, this is your general fund. Again, duplication of the revenues, expenditures for the general fund for the year, but this also shows the beginning and ending, original and final budget numbers, to kind of compare those to your actual numbers. And then flipping forward quite a bit, page 171. 171 is our report as it relates to internal controls over financial reporting. We don't give an opinion on the internal controls, but this is a clean report here where we're, there's no significant deficiencies or no material weaknesses to report here. So, again, a clean report. And then the next, the last of our letters, page 173, this is our opinion as it relates to uniform guidance or the federal compliance piece of the audit. And here, we have issued, again, a clean opinion as it relates to the federal programs we had to audit for this year. And then to the very second to last page, page 180, we do have a state compliance finding as it relates to the school board. This is a repeat comment from last year. It relates to the annual school report. The annual school report is required to be filed with the state by September 15th. It has been filed, but it was filed late, it was filed by the end of December. And like I've said before, it doesn't have any, you know, negative impact on the school board, on the county, you know, there's no funding that has declined because of that. So, it is kind of just, per the Code of Virginia, it's required by that date, and it wasn't, so we have to report it there, so. So that's my quick summary, happy to go into any further questions, further detail on anything you guys have.
Just, Mr. Chair, a couple notes. One, I think that, Josh, the school budget was approximately $2 million underspent. So they, additional state dollars helped cover them, I'm sure the vacancy savings and things like that from positions that weren't filled helped them with that. I haven't talked to them, they may want a piece of that back for capital. But I would note that during the budget season last year, we kind of estimated that about $800,000 that we were going to be short, but I said, we should more than cover that from that, from the budget saving. So we can't, can't give that portion back to them, but I'll have that discussion with Dr. Cox. I think we ended up the year, our general fund revenue was up about a million, but I'd note that $750,000 of that was additional revenue from the use of money. That's interest, our interest-bearing accounts, and thank you to Donna for working diligently to make sure that money is placed into higher interest-bearing accounts. Lou, I know we talked about that the year you were chair, and that's paid off handsomely, but that really helped drive our revenue number up. That coupled with underspending the budget has helped us, I'll say, pad the fund balance. Remember, again, we got to pull that 4.9 million out that's due to the radio system that we borrowed, but also, we've committed up to $3 million on the Manor Turn Lane project, and there may be some other projects, but I think we've got safe reserves that if we want to look at things like the animal shelter and use cash to pay versus having to go out and borrow, we've got a little bit of flexibility there to be able to do that. Josh, you know, I know when I first got here in '20, and that, going through that audit, first audit cycle was painful. Of course, you guys were doing a lot of the pre-audit work in addition to the audit work. Do you feel like the books themselves are in a lot better shape in regards to staff and?
Yes, absolutely. You know, between, you know, the internal finance staff and then the consultants you guys used to kind of get all the pre-audit work before us, I think we might have had one adjustment, it was immaterial, you know, compared to, you know, '20. There were numerous, numerous, multiple pages of adjustments.
50-plus.
Yeah. So, yeah, a very, very strong improvement, obviously, since that time.
Well, thanks to Cheryl and the rest of the finance department staff for, you know, riding herd on it and getting stuff done. And it's, I know, our goal is always to get this document completed by the end of the year. That's not y'all's fault this time, Josh, I know we had some things on our end that didn't quite get done until later, but we appreciate you working with us.
Yep, absolutely.
I believe it was last year's report had a, had a little table about shrinking enrollment and employment with regard to Longwood and Hampton City. Do we have?
It is on page, it's up front.
Page 21.
21, yep. And you actually, you'll see, not only has enrollment rebounded since COVID, but some of the employment numbers have bounced back a little bit as well. For Longwood, we're still not where we were maybe 2018, but, you know, certainly much stronger than we were in, say, '22.
Growth in accounting, I would say these numbers will continue to increase. Families move in.
And should, and, you know, I think our residential growth, we've had 70-plus permits each of the last two years. I think what's changed a little bit, you know, this last year, we had less than 10 new housing starts in town. Five years ago, they had 70, and part of that is availability of building lots. And I think they've got a couple of projects in the pipeline, but, you know, if that starts coming back a little bit, you know, when you're adding, you know, 250, 350, 400,000 a pop per house, and you add another 50 houses, that certainly makes a significant jump. As you're right, on the commercial side, you know, I think like Wawa, our meals tax will certainly pick up from that development. Sales tax is going to pick up from that as well. I think one of the things you look, and our real estate has been relatively flat. Personal property's been up because vehicle values are up, and that's helped fix. But the Board implementing the lodging tax and the meals tax of the last few years have given us a couple additional sources which have helped us kind of spread the tax base a little bit and generate a little bit of additional revenue. Mr. Chair, if there's no other questions, there is a suggested motion to accept the fiscal year audit as presented. One on the last page of your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jim?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Tam? Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Supervisor Jenkins, yes.
All right. Well, Mr. Chair, that's all the items we have today. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
So I've called, just took your call.
Just before we do, at our last meeting with the town, we talked about needing a place for burial. I actually had a meeting with, I guess, the Board last night, and they said that they would, they would sell a burial place to the county, same as like everybody else, it'd be $1,000, and that includes care for five years. At the end of five years, they, they'll send out a memo all the time about it, whatever else. But for $1,000, it would include a site that 25 people could be buried topside if they went deeper than you could bury as many as 35 people, but you'd have to go deeper with the first ones. So that's, that's up to the Board, I did find out that there is, it is available.
Who is that with, Dave?
That's with the Prospect Community Cemetery, right there beside Methodist Church. The only other stipulation they asked was that, like we talked about over there, that they put up a headstone before anyone is ever buried there, and then either the names, the dates, or whatever else on the headstone. So it would be $1,000 for the actual site, and of course, then whatever kind of headstone we wanted, and that would be up to, up to 30 people, 25 people, depending on how you do it. 25 if you didn't go deep, up to 30 if you buried them. And depending on, I don't know what they're in, whether they're in urn, or if they were eco-friendly or whatever, and disposed themselves in X number of years, and you could come back and bury it again.
That's all right, I'll refer that to Ms. Bucket, and we'll bring it back to the Board after some discussion, if that works.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Break for adjournment, Mr. Chair.
I called a special call meeting of Supervisors, President Kennedy, to a close. So motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay. Stop sucking on that.
Yes.
I'm closing again. Make a vote.
Count your vote. Yeah, you can just have, yes, I'm a yes on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Nice, okay. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Bill Jenkins, yes. So I called a meeting, closed. So moved. All right.